Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tana Tewksbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Today's December 16th, 2021. We're going to start with our agenda. Approve of approval of the meeting minutes from October 28th and November 18th of 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great, we'll start with our hearings. Jessica and Colin. Yes, thank you. For a variance from Section 4130 Appendix B for a front inside yard setback and a special permit under Section 3651 to increase the existing non-conforming structure of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct a second story addition shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located 19 Kent Assessor's Map is 57 Lot 131 Zoned Residential. Could you please come up? Have a seat. Name and address?
Jessica Devia, 19 Kent Street, Tewksbury.
Collins, Devia, 19 Kent Street, Tewksbury.
All right, why don't you tell us what you're trying to do?
We're just trying to basically build a second floor. We just have a three-bedroom house right now and we currently have three kids. So we would like to have a second floor, have the rooms upstairs and kind of open up the first floor now currently for a kitchen, dining room, and a living room space. And we would like to push the existing non, what's it called? The garage right now is not attached and we would like an attached garage with a mudroom.
Just looking through the paperwork. Is the denial letter in here?
Can I ask a question?
You can ask questions.
So you're going to tear down the existing garage?
Yes.
Which is not attached?
Yes.
And we want to move it forward and then have it become attached with the mudroom. Or breezeway, I think that's what they call it.
I don't see exactly. I don't see exactly where you're trying to move the garage. I see existing garage to be removed. I see proposed deck. I understand you're putting a second floor on.
So we have the plans here that show the front with the attached garage.
Did you attach that to these plans?
Um, I.
Let me keep digging.
There it is. Oh, I see what you're trying to do, yeah. Nice, that's good.
So how far away? Is that going to push it even further to the property line?
No.
It's not going to be flush with the front of the house. It will be, I don't know if it shows here.
It's on the other side.
Yeah, it's probably like halfway back from the house it will start.
What I'm looking at? Trying to verify what I'm looking at. So you have your existing dwelling, right? This is the one that has the measurements to the property lines?
Yep.
I see your other one, but that doesn't give me dimensions to the property lines. So you got your existing dwelling, your garage back here. That garage is going away.
Yeah.
You're going to put the new garage here, I assume? Or, I'm sorry.
So do you have?
It's going to be, it's going to be here because you are Kent Street, right?
Yeah, do you have page five with the foundation plan on there? That one has 14 six. I think it's going to be going back almost 15 feet from the front of our house.
Right, this gives me. This gives me the dimensions of what you're building, but it doesn't give me dimensions of how far away you are from the property line. Right now, your existing dwelling is 24 foot nine inches from your property line? It needs to be 25?
Right.
That's one of the reasons you're here?
Yep.
And your side, your side is 12, 12 eight and 13?
So where it says proposed addition, where the garage is, that's where the garage will start, the line there. That says right up, right after the driveway, there's a line.
So this is your proposed garage?
Yes.
Okay. See, we got that. So now that's going to be 18, 18 feet off the side and 30 feet off of the front. That's good because you need 15 and 25.
Okay.
Because we've got to look at it this way. This is our street, this is the front of the house, that's the driveway, that's the garage. Proposed addition will be there. And then the deck.
And other than the garage breezeway setup, the existing footprint of the house will stay the same? Because you're adding a second floor, you're not tearing down the house, right?
No, just adding the second floor.
So the existing footprint goes up?
Yep.
And then you add a breezeway mudroom garage?
Yeah, and then we're, and then we're going to push 10 feet back.
On the garage?
For the existing, for the now new addition. So just.
I was okay, now I'm confused.
We're moving backwards.
Yeah, we're going to move 10 feet back.
Moving what back?
The house.
The house.
The whole house?
Well, we're going to add new foundation. We're not, we're not going to technically move the actual.
So you're not keeping the same footprint?
It wasn't really a foundation, I think.
Keeping, keeping the same footprint means you have a house and you build on top of it. You don't build anything outside.
Yeah, so that, that, the part that we're building is going to be pushed back as well. So up and back.
The whole house?
The street?
The, yeah, our backyard.
Towards the backyard, not the front of the house.
Not the front of the house.
So instead of your house being. I don't even know anymore. 24 feet front to back? Your new, your new house is going to be 34 feet front to back?
I'm not sure on the exact measurement of what it will be once we do the back 10 feet.
It's going to be 34 foot six inches is what your house is going to be. Because right now, your existing house is 24 feet front to back. You're going to add 10, you're going to add 10 foot six inches.
Yep.
So you'd be 34 six front to back. And your 38 feet side to side is staying, except you're adding 24 feet of garage. So your house is going to be 50, 52, 58 feet side to side.
Yeah, I think from side to side, it's showing with the additions, it says 55 nine, including the garage. Because 30 10 will be with the garage and the breezeway. And then the house itself would be 24 11 to the back, side to side.
This looks more like it says 38 feet side to side?
For the front.
For the front, yep. Which is, you always got to go with your beggar. Right, but overall. Overall, the house is going to be 68 feet wide facing the street with your garage. You get a 24-foot garage and a six-foot mudroom and your existing house is 38 feet. Right?
Yeah.
I have no further questions at this time. If you don't have any questions.
I don't. Being a public hearing, is there anybody who wants to speak on this? Take that as a nope. Okay, need a motion?
I move to, I move to allow the variance for section, excuse me, schools. Those both pass.
All right.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Well, little discussion?
Yeah.
So they're looking for a special permit, right? Under 3651.
Right. And 4130.
Well, 4130 is dimension requirements. 3651, I want to read it, but it says not more detrimental than what's already there.
Right.
I think the fact. The fact that they're taking down the garage, the existing garage, that's just kind of out in the middle of nowhere. So they're, they're taking down the garage. They are definitely moving closer to that property line, the side yard line?
The side yard and back.
But they're still 18 feet away from it. I guess that's okay. All right, I'm done with my discussion. All right, so I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a special permit under Section 3651 to increase the existing non-conforming structure of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct a second story addition shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 19 Kent Street, Assessor's Map 57 Lot 131 Zoned Residential.
Make a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to make a second motion for a variance under Section 4130 Appendix B for front and side yard setbacks. To increase, of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct a second story addition shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 19 Kent Street, Assessor's Map 57 Lot 131 Zoned Residential.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you're approved.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Anthony and Jacqueline Laverdy, did I put out that correctly? Sorry if I butchered it. For a variance from Section 4130 Appendix B for a side yard setback, Section 4141 for front yard setback, Section 4132 for maximum lot coverage, and a special permit under 3651 to increase the existing non-conforming structure of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct a 20 by 24 garage and a 10 by 20 addition. Shown on plans filed with the board, said property located at 34 Bay Street Ave., Assessor's Map 96 Lot 15 Zoned Residential. Okay, name and address, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm Jackie, this is husband Tony. We live at 34 Bay State Ave.
Excuse me.
News.
Pull that mic a little closer to you, we can't hear you up here.
Please.
Thank you.
So we're Tony and Jackie Laverdy. We live at 34 Bay State Avenue here in Tewksbury. We've been there for about 10 years. Just a little bit of a background. We, like I said, we've been there for about 10 years. About two years ago, in 2019, we renovated the entire interior of the house. Brand-new kitchen, new bathroom. We opened it up and thereby removing a bedroom. So we went from a three-bedroom to a, to a two-bedroom house. Really updated. You know, we, we love the way that the house came out. It's, you know, exactly what we need. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, over the last couple of years, Jackie's dad has had a, his health has gone downhill. He's having, he was having, he was having memory issues and he had to go into Blair House. Also, her mom has some mobility issues. Bottom line is, they can't stay in their current house. So what we wanted to do was add an addition to, to the first floor, bump out, if you're looking at the house, on the right-hand side and bump that out about 10 feet in order to create another bathroom so that, so that her mom can have her own bathroom in the, in the back of the house that can be more suited for somebody with mobility issues. Also that she could have a bigger couple of rooms down there. We were going to build a two-car garage on the other side. Just, one of the reasons we wanted to do that was just because of her mom's mobility issues, just, you know, being able to get in and out of a car during the winter would help to have the garage there. And plus she has one in her current house now, so it'd be kind of just replacing that. And also, we were going to build up so that we could have the second floor of the house and, you know, we would share the kitchen, obviously. But, you know, so that we would have a living space to the, upstairs would also be our entertaining space since her family usually has all of those events at, at her mom and dad's house in Burlington. We would be able to host events now, that kind of thing. We wanted to build the farmer's porch just because, you know, we've always wanted a farmer's porch. Her mom has one at their house in Burlington now, so it'd be kind of, you know, just replacing what she already has in Burlington. So our house was built in 1961, so we would fall under the pre-March 1992 setback for side setbacks of 10 feet and our lot coverage would be at 20%. We're less than that now. Obviously, adding the garage would put us over the, the lot coverage. So if you look on the plan, on the plot plan, there is a, a large shed that's there now with also a, you know, an extension of the shed that was there when we bought the house that goes well beyond a 10-foot setback. It was an unpermitted thing from the, from the, from the previous owner. I checked at the building inspector, you know, and they never permitted anything. So this project would, would, we would be tearing down that shed and that extension and bringing, and the proposed garage would actually be further away from the, from the law line than it is now, so we feel like that would be an improvement. So it would be, according to our plan, would be 9, 9.2 feet away from the property line. Whereas now it's, we didn't put it on the plan, but now it's a, you know, it, it, you can see on the plan extends a couple of feet beyond that and so that would be removed. So, you know, so therefore the proposed garage is closer to complying with the setback. We also feel that the addition of the second floor would fit into the character of the neighborhood. Both, both homes on either side of this have a second floor, so it wouldn't be out of place in the neighborhood. The height would be approximate to what our neighbors' heights are. There are two new homes on our street that are, you know, two and a half-story newer homes, so it would feel like it would fit into the character of the neighborhood and, you know, frankly, improve the character of the neighborhood because, A, we would be getting, we would be removing that, you know, older, you know, that older shed and adding a nice new garage. So just.
Can I ask a question before you go any further?
Sure.
Do you have a certified plot plan in the package or just a proposed plot plan?
That was, yeah, it was, it was, we put the proposed on the, on the plot plan.
I got the proposed, proposed plot plan, but I don't have the original plot plan.
Oh, the, the existing conditions are on the plot plan. We didn't do a separate plot plan for existing and proposed. We just had, you can see like the existing shed to be raised there.
Okay. All right, so everything in the darker black is proposed, everything in the lighter black with the hash marks is existing?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm sorry, go on.
Okay. So. So basically, the, you know, looking at the zoning bylaws, the intent of having all the residential areas in the town fall into a single, our 40 district is to set a standard for homes built on one-acre parcels of land. Obviously, our, in our neighborhood, none of the parcels meet that standard. So the fact that, so the town recognized this when they allotted, you know, exceptions for houses, you know, that were built before 1992. So the standard was that, so the zoning board is allowed to approve plans that they do not feel nullify or substantially derogate from the intent and purpose of the bylaws. That's reading from the actual bylaw. So we feel that the plans meet the standard because the proposed additions to the structures meet the rear and side, side requirement and the, and what I'm calling the east side setback is closer to compliance than the, than the existing structure is. And the.
Can I ask you a question on that one?
Sure.
So the east side is more compliant than existing? What's closer on the existing?
So do you see the overhang? Do you see right on top of the nine at 9.3? Does that overhang there?
Yep.
Yeah, that, that's, that's going to, that's going to be demolished.
And what's that measurement?
Didn't have a measurement on that, but it's a couple of feet.
It was about eight feet away from.
Yeah.
The property line.
Yeah, it was around eight feet away.
That's kind of why I was looking for the certified plot plan. The original plot plan without any of the proposed, because that's where you would get those measurements. All right, go on, please.
Yeah, so, and just, so the difference in the lot coverage for a lot of our size would be about 512 square feet and allowing us that would enable us to, you know, actually construct the two-car garage, which should add value to the property and make the, you know, and, you know, the surrounding neighborhood as a whole. It would fit into the surrounding neighborhood as a whole with all of the new work that's gone on on our street. And that's about it.
So are you looking to build the garage or not build the garage?
Looking to build the garage. So, so basically, we're building the garage, we're building the proposed 10 by 20 addition in the back and the second floor is going to encompass the whole area. If you see all the, the architectural plans we had.
I was just asking because you made it confusing there with if you built the garage, you're going to build the garage or not build the garage?
Oh, did. Did I say if I'm like?
I'm easily confused, it's okay.
No, I meant if as in if we get approved, I'm sorry.
Okay, anything else?
No, I mean, just, you know, just want to reiterate that, you know, we really do love our neighborhood. Our neighbors are awesome. We really, you know, we, we showed that when we, you know, when we put a lot of money into renovating our house and we, you know, we really don't want to have to leave and, you know, this is a way to accommodate Jack and Mom and to still be part of the community and, you know, we really do want to stay here.
Do you have any more questions?
So the existing, the existing structure was non-conforming because of the overhang?
I believe it was non-conforming because of, because of frontage, right? Or, no, no, the, the, on the side, it was non-conforming because of, because of the overhang, yeah.
Okay.
But when I say overhang, it's, I wish I took a picture and, and put it in the packet, I apologize. It did, it's, it's basically a covering to put trash barrels in. It's like two foot by, like four foot going back and, you know.
See, 3651.
Right, but without the original plot plan, without all the additions, because this, the proposed plot plan?
Yeah.
It gives us the dimensions of everything that was proposed. Not the dimensions of what was there, what is there. That's the only reason I was up for break. But I'm okay. Easy answer, all my questions.
Being now this public hearing, I'd like to open it up to the public. Okay? Somebody make a motion? Close?
Those will pass.
Yes, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
You guys want to talk about this one? There's four different variances we have to approve here. A review. So we have 4130, 4141, 4132.
I don't know, that's, that's kind of what got me. Why did we put?
3651.
Why did we put 4141? It is 41.
I don't know.
I'll read if you want. I believe, ah, 4141 was front setback for the farmer's porch.
Yeah, I see that. Thank you.
Sorry about that, it just took me a minute to find the inspector's letter.
Just typically, when you, when we're doing variance on dimensional requirements, we don't, I've never seen 4141 listed.
It's always just 4130.
4130 Appendix B is usually just what's listed. But that's fine.
That's good.
All right, is everybody happy? I'll make a bunch of motions. All right. I would like to make a motion to approve Anthony and Jacqueline Laverdy?
Laverdy.
Pretty close. For a special permit under Section 3651 to increase the existing non-conforming structure of the Tewksbury bylaws to construct a 20 by 24 garage and a 10 by 20 addition. Shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at 34 Bay State Avenue, Assessor's Map 96. assessors map ninety-six, lot fifteen, Zoned Residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to make a motion to approve Anthony and Jacqueline Laverty for, let's do this one, a variance from the Tuxbury zoning bylaws, section forty-one-thirty-two, for the allowed maximum lot coverage of up to twenty percent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna group the other two together.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't you?
All right, make a motion to approve Anthony and Jacqueline Laverty for a variance under section forty-one-thirty, appendix B, for side yard setbacks. Section forty-one-forty-one for front yard setbacks.
We have a second?
Not yet, not yet. Okay, so, for front yard setbacks of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw, to construct a twenty-by-twenty-four garage and a ten-by-twenty addition. Shown on plans filed with this board, said property is located at thirty-four Bay State Avenue, assessors map ninety-six, lot fifteen, Zoned Residential. Now I'm done.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Approved.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Enjoy.
Okay. Gordon Gale. Thank you. For a variance from section forty-one-thirty, appendix B, for side yard setbacks of Tuxbury zoning bylaw, to construct a proposed addition and deck, shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at ten-fifty-eight Chandler Street, assessors map forty-three, lot twenty-nine, Zoned Residential. Name and address, please?
Gordon Schnapper, ten-fifty-eight Chandler Street.
Can you tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do, please?
What we're trying to do is basically gain a bed. My, my daughter and her two sons are living with us, and the two boys are in the bedroom, in one bedroom. We're trying to give them their own bedrooms. As part of that, we intend to, are we planning to put an addition on what is currently a two-story house. The first floor will be a two-car garage, something we'd always wanted. And the second floor will be master suite and the new bedroom. In the process of the construction, their old bedroom will be gone. So, it ends up as a net of one bedroom. Part of it, the current sun porch will be demolished, and the deck will kind of be rearranged around that. You can see that on the plot plan, showing the addition.
That's a nice plot plan.
Waiting for that.
So you're building a garage with a second story?
Yes.
Master bedroom, deck, things like that?
Do you have anything to ask?
I have nothing.
Being that it's a public hearing, I'd like to open it up. Okay, somebody make a motion?
Motion to call the, 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 the.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Want to discuss?
I make a motion to approve Gordon and Gaely Schnapp, Schnapper?
Schnapper.
Schnapper, for a variance, you don't really care, from a variance from section forty-one-thirty, appendix B, for side yard setbacks of the Tuxbury zoning bylaw, to construct a proposed addition and deck, shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at ten-fifty-eight Chandler Street, assessors map forty-three, lot twenty-nine, Zoned Residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approved.
I do have one request. I had mistakenly applied for a variance from the planning board, because I mistakenly thought this was a family suite, not realizing that it needs to have a kitchen to be considered a family suite, that's a special permit. So they suggested in the office, that they, since they don't have the authority, to request that, the application fee for this variance would be, to be waived, because basically, they already paid for the original one.
Not sure I understand.
I understand exactly what he said.
Okay.
He applied at the planning board, because he thought it was a family suite. Planning board does family suites.
Right.
It's not a family suite.
Right.
It's a variance. So he paid the fee for the planning board, that you're not gonna use, because you're not going to the planning board now.
Exactly. Well, I did, is, found out that it wasn't a family suite through that, through them. Because I could not find...
Which is something that probably should've got caught at the office.
Right.
I agree with him.
Yeah, I do too.
Can we do that? They told you to have us do that?
They said, well, they said they didn't have the authority to do it, and you should.
It's not, it's not worth it.
So what do I propose, that?
We could make a motion to waive the fee.
I'd like...
This particular applicant.
I would like to make a motion. Go ahead, make a motion, please, and I will...
I like, I like new stuff.
You know, I do too.
Let's make a motion.
Let's make a motion, let's do this.
Let's make a motion to waive, what is it, a hundred-and-fifty dollars?
Whatever, I don't remember.
Waive the fee.
Waive the fee.
Waive the application fee for Gordon and Gaely Schnapper.
Schnapper, yeah.
That's it. For, for, for the application for property located at ten-fifty-eight Chandler Street, assessors map forty-three, lot twenty-nine, Zoned Residential.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Waived.
Well?
Thank you. That's a new one.
I like that.
You do.
Thank you, sir, good luck.
Hey, do we have any old business? Nope. New business? Nope, nope, no correspondence. We already did that.
Okay, there were two. There was one from the twenty-eighth of October also here?
Yes.
We did both.
We did.
Thank you.
For both.
Nice.
Okay. All right, our next meeting is January twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Happy holidays and happy new year. We, somebody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Some will. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.